All right, we're gonna have a quick special recognition this evening and before we get totally started, I'm gonna have Jen Kaiser tell us about Avid and all the authors that are coming in hopefully this year and even more.
Tonight.
Tonight. So Jen, if you'll step up and you'll get all of our library folks and our authors.
Well, it's April and that means authors for the Des Moines Public Library. We are kicking off our 11th season of Avid, which stands for Authors Visiting in Des Moines. And we have our very own author here, Patrick Carr, who wrote a book called Hollowing Out the Middle about stopping the rural brain drain out of Iowa. He'll be speaking tonight at 7:00 PM at the Central Library and he is the first of eight outstanding authors. The next one up is Wednesday Night with Ann Lamott. And you can find all the information on our website at www.dmpl.org. So click on that and hope to see you at some of the events.
Jen, why don't we have our author just say a couple of words? We have him right here today.
Delighted to be here. As I was explaining to people earlier on, my hometown of Grodda in Ireland, my father and my grandfather were both mayors. So it's nice to be here. I'm the black sheep of the family. Not only did I leave, but I also led what could have been a political dynasty. I'm thrilled to be here. As Jen mentioned, I'm the kickoff speaker or the leadoff hitter maybe for the Avid series. I'll be talking about our book, which is based on research we did in northeastern Iowa about the rural brain drain and what it means for America and hopefully talking about some of the things that are working here in the state of Iowa to sort of plug up the rural brain drain. So if you have a chance, please come out. We kick off tonight at 7:00 PM at the Des Moines Public Library. Thank you for having us.
Patrick, I'm a little worried about you having this background with a bunch of mayors. And now the scary part is you write about it.
Yes, right. You're next.
Hopefully I won't have anybody in my family write about it. So, in recognition of their 11th season, I'm gonna read the special recognition. The Des Moines Public Library will host eight programs by nationally recognized authors during this year's 11th season of Avid, Authors Visiting in Des Moines. Author series, that much anticipated lineup will once again offer a fascinating mix of outstanding authors. The books feature also a diverse mix from local issues such as Iowa's brain drain to the global challenges of human trafficking in the mountainous regions of Nepal to how a family deals with the aftermath of the tsunami in Thailand. The free events are as follows. This evening, tonight at 7 o'clock at the Central Library, you get the chance not only on this evening of the city council meeting, but hopefully in person to see Patrick Carr at 7:00 PM at the Central Library. On the April 13th, we're gonna have Ann Lamott, which will be Wednesday at 7 o'clock. It'll be at Hoyt Sherman Place Theater. Rainbow Rowell will be Monday, April 18th at 7 at the Central Library again. Robert V. Morris will be Monday, April 25th at 7:00 PM at the Central Library. And Debbie McComber will be Tuesday, May 10th at 7:00 PM at the Hoyt Sherman Place Theater. And Connor Grenin, Tuesday, June 7th, 7 o'clock at the Hoyt Sherman Place Theater. Dr. Benjamin Beck, Dr. Robert Schumaker, and Dr. Christina Walcup will be at June 14th at the Central Library at 7:00 PM. And John Shores will be Monday, September 12th at 7:00 PM at the Hoyt Sherman Place Theater. In recognition of the Des Moines Public Library, we hope you all will enjoy the programs and events they offer throughout the year and take the time to visit one of their locations and rediscover all the things that the library has to offer. Therefore, I, the mayor of the city of Des Moines, on behalf of the city council and all of our citizens, want to bring the attention to the 2011 Avid offer series and we hope you'll all take the opportunity. Let's give them a great big hand. Did we get a picture? All right, we also have a very special proclamation on Champions for Children Week. And I will ask all those who are gonna pick partners to come forward at this time. Now, who's gonna be the champions?
Thank you so much. I'm Arlene Dobie, the director of the Evelyn Davis Early Learning Academy. We are celebrating 45 years this year of the academy, which was Tiny Todd slash Evelyn Davis Academy. We have some events going on this particular week because we are celebrating Champions for Children to help us reach 45 years of service within the community.
And we have a special proclamation for the Evelyn Davis outreach and all the work that she did. This woman worked tirelessly for everybody in this community and certainly in her community. And whereas Mrs. Evelyn Davis founded the Tiny Todd's Outreach Center in 1966, now named the Evelyn Davis Early Learning Academy. And whereas for over 30 years as the director of the school, Mrs. Davis and her staff cared for and educated over 12,000 at-risk children. Mrs. Davis was an outspoken leader for the poor, young, and those without a voice in the halls of power. And whereas the granddaughter of slave Evelyn was born in Kansas City, Missouri on April 20th, 1921. And Mrs. Davis moved to Des Moines in 1939. She lived and worked in her adopted city as a one-woman social service agency and educator until her death on October 27th, 2001, at the age of 80. And whereas a recognized as a leader in early childhood and advocate for the poor, Mrs. Davis opened the state's first childcare centers for poor children so their parents could work and receive their fair share of the American dream. And whereas she developed the state's first childcare worker certification program with the Iowa State University and was a charter member of the National Black Children Development Organization and the Children's Defense Fund, she delivered the first Ed Start preschool program in Iowa. And whereas Mrs. Davis's 90th birthday would have been on April 20th, 2011, and we celebrate and honor her today as part of our remembrance for her contributions to our city's children. Whereas Mrs. Davis's legacy as a tireless leader for children remains the guiding principle for the Evelyn Davis Early Learning Academy, a private nonprofit academic preschool learning bearing her name, servicing at-risk children with a mission of celebrating lifelong learners and productive memories of society. And whereas the Evelyn Davis Early Learning Academy provides full-day, year-round educational programs to three- to five-year-old students from all the Des Moines area in its nationally accredited and state-certified academic preschool. And now therefore, I, the mayor of Des Moines, on behalf of our city council and the citizens of the city of Des Moines, do hereby proclaim the week of April 18th to the 22nd is Champions for Children Week in recognition of Mrs. Evelyn Davis's 90th birthday and the Evelyn Davis Early Learning Academy and their 45th anniversary. Let's give everybody a great big hand. We'll get started with our city council meeting in just a moment. It's a little after 4:30 and it's April 11th and we're gonna go ahead and get started with our city council meeting. Prior to the official start, we're gonna have a quick moment of wisdom or invocation by Mrs. Hensley. And those who would participate with us, we'd ask you to stand at this time.
Thank you. I just wanted to make a couple of comments here. Albert Einstein said, "Learn from yesterday, live for today, hope for tomorrow." May we learn from yesterday's mistakes and challenges. Tonight, may we live in the moment, taking joy in our meeting. And may we increase in hope for our actions of tomorrow through the public process and information that we received tonight. Thank you.
I'll ask clerk to take roll, please.
County?
Here.
Coleman?
Here.
Moore?
Here.
Grease?
Here.
Hensley?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Item two is approving the agenda as presented and/or as amended. Could we have a motion?
Move.
Any corrections? Mrs. Hensley, we had one that we were gonna...
It's on the moratorium, which is in the hearings. It's the item in the hearings. It's the second item in the hearings. 44.
Item 44 this evening, which is a rezoning on a C-3A and a C-3 to prohibit gas stations and fuel sales within that business area. We're gonna continue that hearing and extend the moratorium this evening. So that's what that vote will be for those of you who are hoping to stay here and see what's gonna happen on that. I think we're gonna have further discussion. So I want to give you all a heads up on that. So the agenda has been moved.
Six yes.
Item three, approving the consent agenda tonight. Those are items three through 37. These are routine items and they'll be enacted as one vote, as a roll call unless somebody in the audience or a member of our city council wants to have one pulled for separate discussion or consideration. This evening, let me see. More of this. Item five, council member Moore and I vote no. Item seven and 18, council member Moore is asked to speak. Item 26, council member Hensley is asked to speak. Item 29, council member Moore is gonna speak on that one. And item 34, or 37, council member Moore wants to request to waive the additional readings on that one. Are there any others? Anybody in the audience have any additional items beside those that have been mentioned already?
Mayor, I'd like to withdraw my request on number seven.
Okay, seven is withdrawn.
Mayor, I wasn't here in time to submit mine, but I would like to pull item 22, which is in regard to the Blank Park Zoo.
Okay. All right. Other than that, anybody in the audience? Seeing none, could we have a motion for the balance?
Move.
It's been moved.
Six yes.
All right, that takes us directly to item 18. Item 18 is a communication from the Planning and Zoning Commission regarding requests from the Friends of the Des Moines Botanical Center for the closure of the park road known as Robert D. Ray Drive from a point north of Interstate 235 to East Sixth Street. And that's receiving that communication from Plan and Zoning. Mr. Moore?
I realize this is just receiving the communication from P&amp;Z, but I've got a lot of concerns about this. I'm willing to support this tonight, but I would like to meet with the folks that are doing this project to discuss some concerns that I have with this project. And I'll move 18.
Okay, any other discussion? Seeing none?
Six yes.
Okay, item 22 is on the items regarding the Blank Park Zoo and setting a date of hearing of April 25th, Council Communication Number 11-219. Mr. Coleman?
Thank you. The council was at a workshop this morning.
The council was at a workshop this morning, many of you were, but most of the TV audience, some people in the hall could not be here. I do want to just say that it's a really exciting day that we have things buttoned down enough to hold a hearing in two weeks to discuss the future of the zoo. Mark Vukovich is here. He's our zoo director and members of the board and executive committee are here. I just wanted to thank you for coming down in case there were questions or discussion. On April 25th, we'll have a public hearing and then take action on kind of a new future for the Blank Park Zoo, a better future. So I'm really excited about it. I appreciate staff and our lawyer team and the city manager for personally engaging in this and everybody from the zoo. So it'll be a good day on the 25th when we have it on our agenda. Anything you guys want to add, Mark or anybody? Yeah. So I'll move that and I just wanted to acknowledge you and thank you for coming down today.
Six yes.
Item twenty-six is a communication from the city's Office of Economic Development regarding preliminary terms of agreement with Alliance Technologies LLC to locate at 420 Watson Powell. Council Communication number eleven dash two oh seven. Mrs. Hensley.
I pulled this off of the consent agenda because I would just like to thank all of the individuals that have worked on this. This has been a real team. I see Tim Lynch out there, former city employee Matt Anderson didn't hurt our cause any, I'm sure, Matt. Thank you very much. Appreciate that. But the mayor and Chris Coleman and myself did have an opportunity to actually have lunch with the executive team, the executive officers at Alliance Technologies, and it was really a great opportunity to learn how a company that started out, Fred Weiss, it's too bad he left, but it was a company that started out with Fred Weiss's company, and how they've grown and they will actually be moving 25 employees back into the downtown area. So it's a win-win for all of us here in Des Moines and I think it was indicative of how all of the players came together to make sure that we kept that company in the city of Des Moines. So I just wanted to thank everybody personally and I think it really is a great model as to how we should be proactively going about other companies as such. Not that we don't, I mean, we do it in different ways, but this was a little bit different in how everybody came together to do it. So a big thank you and I'm happy to move approval of this loan, which is item twenty-six.
All right. Item twenty-nine, proposal from Tom Rosberg, Ph.D., for professional consulting services to conduct a natural resource inventory of the city's park and open space land, $52,525. Council Communication number eleven dash two twenty-four. Mr. Moore.
Well, I think that we're on the right track with this project. However, it bothers me when we'd, a couple of us request we have some staff, take some training, which I actually started today, learning about green infrastructure. And this is all wrapped around green infrastructure. And then there's a couple items in here that really stand out to me. One of them is identifying large concentrations of ash trees that could be impacted by emerald ash borer. I think this is a good idea, however, it's not could be impacted. We've all heard it here in a workshop, our ash trees, unless there's a miracle cure they come up with, we're losing all of our ash trees. And I hope staff starts taking this serious. We're going to lose our ash trees. It's a good thing to know where they're at, but we are going to lose them at this point. The other thing is lying right after it, identifying trees of special importance, studic size, rarity, or any other condition of interest. I would like to know what we're going to do with that once we identify them. Last year, I got a call from Senator Dennis Black inquiring as to why we were removing the largest cottonwood in the state of Iowa. So if we're going to identify these trees, are we going to protect them or are we just going to know that they're there? I think that we've got to take that serious if we get it. Other than that, I'll move this.
Any other discussion? Been moved?
Five yes.
Item thirty-seven is an ordinance, a second reading amending Chapter 118 municipal code regarding extending the completion and submittal dates of qualifying improvements for the private property protection program. Councilmember Moore is asked to request the, request to waive the reading for, third reading. Anything else, Mr. Moore?
It's just a very fine program. I haven't heard one negative thing from anybody, especially the residents of Partook in this, and I don't see any reason to, you know, it's no big deal, but why have another reading? I'd just like to move both second, third readings on it.
Okay. Any other discussion?
We need Chris Coleman for that.
No, he's on the phone. We need...
We need six votes for this.
Everybody else could go ahead and vote. All right. That completes the consent agenda. We've got ordinances. Item thirty-eight, amending Chapter 114 of the municipal code regarding traffic regulations changes as follows. Council Communication number eleven dash two oh six, A is the removal of the former central library parking lot from the municipal code, and B is additional handicap parking spaces on High Street between 10th and 11th. Any discussion on that from anybody in the audience or any of the council members? Seeing none, could we have a motion, please?
I'll move thirty-eight, A and B. And I'll request the waiving of the second and third readings based upon the non-prepublish.
Okay. Item thirty-nine is from Councilmembers Mahaffey and Moore to discuss taxpayer quality assurance. Who would like to speak first?
Well, there's been some issues with some of our contractors as to the quality of the work that they're doing, and I've been searching around and discussed this with some people. And this, you know, people, our residents and us, that we all agree, lower cost, I understand that, but nobody's heard lower quality. And we're having a problem with some of our work out there. And what I would like to do, this is the same language that Polk County has adopted and they're using it successfully. All five members voted for it. And what I'd like to do is move to receive and file and refer it to Rick and staff to come back to the next meeting with their recommendations on it.
I think...
Bob.
I think this has some very positive results that can be accomplished from this. I think we get some of these people who are pre-approved and when you go up for an RFP and that, not necessarily are they going to be awarded the contract or anything, but you know that they've already filled this out and satisfied some of the needs that are required and can help speed up some of the activities, I think, as far as getting some jobs accomplished.
Christine?
I don't have a problem with referring it back to the city manager, but I guess the bigger question I would have is the role of the bonding agents. I mean, they're already doing that and if there's a problem with the quality of work, are we saying that we as a city are going to come in and take over what the bonding has done? I mean, that's what the bonding company is all about.
But I, yeah, that's what a bonding company is, but hopefully that we won't experience those with quality workers out there. And that's why it's referred back to the city manager and let him come up with some his thoughts on this and come back to us.
The other thing too, though, is, I would just go back. We had this discussion back five, six years ago. We went through an extensive process and there were all kinds of issues, so I want to make sure that we take those into account as well.
Christine, this is different language than it was and at the...
It's a lot less, but it's still similar.
At the Polk County level, there was a threat of a lawsuit and they said, okay, let's do it. Well, then the people that threatened lawsuit withdrew it. And it's, Polk County used it on their river complex and vets and they're using it on all their projects. And granted, they may not do as many as we have. That'd probably be more of a reason for us to have this.
Well, I guess based upon the information and when it goes back to the city manager's office, I want to make sure that all parties that need to be involved are involved and that it's not just a small group of individuals, because there was a great deal of time and effort spent on this. There was actually legal action that was taken at some point, and I think the amount of expenses paid for legal fees was well over $100,000. So I think it's something that needs to be, I don't have a problem with it being looked at and discussed, but I think we need to be very, very careful about it.
No, I think that's good that that's behind us. We can use that for some of the bases going forward. So I'm sure Rick has access to all that information, so.
He does.
Anybody else? Mr. Clerk?
Mayor and council, we'd be happy to take a look at it. I've talked a bit with Jeff and with Jeb Brewer, who are two key staff people within our organization that'll help us review this. This was reviewed and proposed some years ago. For whatever reason, it didn't go forward into final action. It is an issue that is relatively complex, so, and the words you put on the paper are important and will have, and will have implications. It is possible to do, there's no question about that, but it's really important that we strike the right balance coming out of the chute on it. Mr. Moore, your motion suggested the next meeting, is it possible to have a little bit more time, given the complexity of the issue? Maybe a month, a month would be helpful.
Okay. I amend my motion to make it first meeting of May.
Okay.
Yeah, I think we need a goal to shoot for, but I don't want us to go over without digging into it deeply and getting the right answers.
But I think, I think by that time that Mr. Moore just mentioned, we'll be able to have some initial thoughts back to you and maybe use that as a way to seek your further direction on it.
And was the original, just to clarify, that original work and discussion that was had before, Mr. Manager, was that about project labor agreements or was it about a quality assurance program?
It was, Mr. Mayor, my understanding it was around prequalification requirements, essentially what you have on, on the agenda this evening.
Okay.
All right. Mayor, just a quick comment for me. I support the motion and I strongly support doing something. I was on the committee in 2000 when Brooks and Velasis and I, I think it was, you know, worked on it for a year. Christine was on the committee for at least part of that time as well. And, you know, I'm convinced that when the state law says you have to award bids to the lowest responsible bidder, we should have a way of defining what responsible is. The one thing I would say, and when Skip and I talked about this a couple of weeks ago, it's important to me that we really do look out for the taxpayers, which in some ways means that we have the broadest possible bidding group. So, you know, my threshold and criteria for all the things that I've supported is that it shouldn't be about weeding out potential bidders, but making sure that the lowest bid is a responsible bid. And, and, you know, so as we think about it, it's not just the questionnaire that is, it's important, but it's also making sure that the process unfolds in a way where we, you know, we don't end up with a project where we only have one qualified bidder so that bidder can bid whatever they want. We want a process that opens up the bidding, but that we make sure when we get to that lowest bid, that it is a responsible bid. And if not, we move to the next one. So.
Okay. You have a motion? Item forty is from Bob Wessel of 212 University Avenue, number fifteen, to speak regarding financial matters. Is Bob in the audience?
He withdrew his request, Mayor.
He withdrew it. Item forty-one, Zach Manheimer of 647 36th Street to speak regarding the reimbursement of sidewalk lease at 1408 Locust Street.
Hi there. Zach Manheimer, 647 36th Street in Des Moines. I'm here representing the Side Show Lounge, which was the bar inside Des Moines Social Club. The bar took out a three-year lease on the sidewalk in front of 1408 Locust Street and we've since had to move. And we used about, we used seven months of that lease at the space. And I understand that this has not been asked before, so I'm asking and we'll see what we can do. We, I'm requesting reimbursement of the time...
So essentially you've had one year on a three-year lease?
We've had about seven months, yeah. So we've spent...
Let's have the city manager quickly address that.
Oh, sure.
Maybe that'll help clarify it for all of us.
Mayor and council, and Zach, thanks for coming. I think the facts, as you outlined, are essentially correct. You paid an upfront three-year lease payment. You're only going to get a year or so of use out of that lease. Your request, as I understand it, is to have a refund of the portion of the lease payment that you upfronted in reference to the fact that you've only used it for about a third of the time, or maybe less. Mayor and council, I think that's a reasonable request and I would further suggest that in this instance, the ordinance does require this to come back before the council. However, the dollar amounts are relatively small here and it would be my recommendation to you that not only would you authorize me to work something out with Mr. Manheimer, that we also look at some amendment to our ordinance that would allow some of these low-cost kinds of issues to be resolved administratively rather than have to bring people forward and go through all this. In terms of the dollar amounts, I should have told you, the total lease fee for three years was $1,645. There was an admin fee of $100. So I simply suggest that we prorate those costs for the period of the lease that's been used and refund the balance.
I will make a motion along that line since it's on the council agenda and also include that administratively, they could be handled in the future.
I think, should we refer back, we'd like to see the ordinance probably to see what the, how you're going to do it.
Yeah. Mr. Mayor, council, yeah. Yeah, we'd have to bring an ordinance amendment back to you, but in the meantime, we could make this happen for Zach and his group, and then we'll bring back an amendment to you for your ordinance, for your consideration.
Okay.
I agree with the lease portion of it, but I think we already had administrative costs.
The admin fee of $100, we'd probably have to charge.
He would have to pay.
But the balance of it, we could refund.
Okay.
Zach, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Coleman?
Six yes.
Item forty-two is from Angela Winders of 2131 Lay Street to speak regarding the vicious dog ordinance.
Hi. I'm a little nervous. I've never done this before, but I'm here today to request that the city council please change the dog ordinance laws for vicious dogs. I think it would be safer if we did, how to say this? I realize that the average, this is an unpopular undertaking to do this. We recently had several pit bulls move into our neighborhood and we have turned them in for having loose dogs and they have been returned and they say, well, these dogs, they're following the ordinance so they can have three large dogs, you know, as long as they're on leashes. But those of us in the neighborhood still feel unsafe with these dogs here. We have small children and small dogs and we're concerned for them. I was hoping that the laws would be changed, that maybe they could have one large dog, that's a vicious dog. I'd actually like all vicious dogs, pit bulls and so forth, to be banned from the city, but that's what I'm here about. I do have paperwork about vicious dogs.
Would you want to submit that and then we'll...
Yeah, it's quite a bit.
Yeah, and if we get a motion to receive and file, we'll put it with the record.
Okay.
We'll let you do that.
Come back and summarize.
They're all different articles.
They're different articles. The first one has...
I thought it was copies of stuff.
The first one has statistics, I can't talk, of vicious dogs and which ones are the most vicious, which ones have had the most attacks, manings, and killings. That's, that's the first one. And the others are articles of attacks and so forth. We have small dogs and small children in the neighborhood. And I, they're just getting so prevalent. Everywhere I turn, everybody's got pit bulls and rottweilers and other dogs. So that was my concern. I know in 2009, you had at one time thought about banning pit bulls. This is just something like that, but, I don't know, any questions? I'm nervous.
Do you want to review this now or later?
Probably later.
Okay. All right. Thank you. And maybe we ought to amend it a little bit and let's have legal or something or...
Well, I appreciate you coming forward. I guess we, we all know how much discussion we've had at the table here and we've gone through the vicious dog ordinance, but I think you raise a valid point where our ordinance allows three dogs.
Yes.
It doesn't describe the breed. It just says three dogs.
Yes.
And I would be nervous if I had small children... And I would be nervous if I had small children, and you had people moving in, and they had three of the vicious dogs in one household. So I, you know, I think it's worth us going back and revisiting that. So my motion would be to receive and file, refer it back to city manager and legal, to look at that and maybe come back with a recommendation to us, understanding it's a highly controversial item.
Yes. I understand that, and I do feel bad for those people. There are good dog owners, but I also feel bad for my dogs. I have tiny little dogs that they don't seem to be very concerned what happens to my dog if their dog gets out and attacks it and kills it, you know. They want their rights, but what about my dogs and animals' rights, too?
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. It completes those items, moves us into hearings. Five o'clock. Forty-three and the application from City Cab LLC for the certificate of public convenience and necessity to operate a taxi cab service. A is the first consideration of the ordinance amending Chapter 126 of the municipal code to allow an additional fee of $2 per trip where a taxi cab steward is utilized. B is the final consideration of the ordinance above. The waiver is requested by the cab companies, requires six votes, and C is communication from Sam Kramer, the attorney for City Cab. All right. Let's go ahead and open that hearing. Is there somebody here from City Cab?
My name is Sam Kramer. My address, for the purposes of record, is 6600 West Town Parkway, West Des Moines, Iowa, Suite 190. The saga of this is well-known to the council and the mayor. And what I'd like to do, rather than get into a long, protracted presentation, I'd like to just focus very briefly on two different issues. One issue is what the ordinance says or should say, and the second is the question of a letter which I received a copy of approximately 10:30 this morning. Mr. Lillis is going to speak a little bit about the ordinance. I will tell you that we've worked very hard with Trans Iowa to work out an accommodation that is acceptable to City Cab and acceptable to Trans Iowa. This accommodation is going to require some changes to the ordinance. We are in agreement with those changes and are willing to abide by them. So with that, we'd like to turn it over to Mr. Lillis.
You said you had two items.
You were going to talk about the letter?
Yes. If you'd prefer, we can talk about the letter first.
I'd like to hear it first.
My understanding about the letter, and this is a letter that is undated, but I understand was received today. This letter, as I understand it, was initiated by Awis Habib. It is our understanding that Awis Habib, who is in the audience here today, is in fact a driver, or is currently a driver for City Cab. Abdullah Robel is also in the audience today, is also a driver for City Cab. Awis Ali is not a driver for City Cab, and that is not, in fact, his name, and I'll get to that in just a moment. Our understanding is Awis Habib approached Mohammed Ahmed and asked to be a full partner in City Cab. When he was rejected as a full partner, he announced that he was going to make sure City Cab did not get its license, and did not say much more than that. We believe that that was the genesis for this letter. Mohammed certainly can speak to it. We believe that the accusations in it are, in fact, untrue. As far as Abdullah Ha Robel, it is my understanding that he signed this, not understanding what the contents were. It was my, it is my understanding that he signed this based on his misunderstanding of the proposed statute. He thought that the $2 surcharge, which will be talked about later, was going to come out of his pocket, rather than be charged to customers, and therefore, he felt that if the City Cab application was torpedoed, somehow that would also impact the agreement on the $2 fee. As far as this Awis Ali, what I understand to have happened is that Awis Habib called Awis Jamal and asked him no more than, what is your name? And in order to prevent himself from getting in trouble on this item, he said, my name is Awis Ali. And the name you see on this letter is, in fact, not the name of any of our drivers. It is a name given so that our driver would not get, find himself in trouble, and that is not his signature on this document. I'm relaying to you what I have learned from Mohammed. Mohammed, if you'd like to speak to those issues.
Thank you, and counsel is. Awis Habib is part of the referees. If you get them and make the deal, yellow agreement for $2, he's starting, he say, guys, I want to come, partner. I say, you come, you cannot partner. And then other issue, he say, some other company, in full feet, why you agree $2 for yellow, other company taxi, why you agree $2? If you agree $2, other companies told me, taxi cabs company, other company say, if you agree $2, you cannot get the license. Yellow, you don't have the license. I say, my lawyer, I'm yellow lawyer, make the deal, that's I finish. I don't want to go back. And then starting this problem. He say, you cannot get the license. I say, if you have the license, don't give me. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think that there is something, I will try to gently say is a cultural issue involving some members of this community. I would tell you that it may be standard practice to extort partnership interests where they're originally from. That is not the way we do it here. On the other hand, desperate people do desperate things.
Thank you.
Is there anything further you would like from me on this letter?
Probably not at this moment, if you'll remain available. Sorry. Okay. There's a couple other items on the, on the agenda under item forty-three. If there are additional speakers that have things to say as before, we'd ask that you'd come over to the south side and get online here to, to speak to any issues. But I'd ask that we get through the balance of items A, B, and C, and if Mr. Lillis has some words of wisdom.
Mr. Mayor, if you'd like, I'd like to just do two things very quickly. Number one, I'd like to state that rather than put on a full presentation as to the certificate of need, I would like to merely have the previous testimony be considered as though it were given here in person tonight.
That we understand that, Mr. Kramer, and we will fully remember every word of it.
Thank you. We appreciate that.
And second, I again want to reiterate that we have worked very hard with Trans Iowa and Mr. Lillis. We've worked on language that we feel, that we can live with, and that Mr. Lillis feels that Trans Iowa can live with. We cannot, and do not speak for any of the other cab companies, but we certainly want to commend Trans Iowa, as well as this council and the mayor, for all the assistance that you are giving us through this process.
Thank you. Mr. Lillis?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, William Lillis, 317 Sixth Avenue, Suite 300. I'm appearing on behalf of Trans Iowa. Mr. Sackett, Mr. Christensen are here with me this evening. The council items, as you all remember, of course, has had a lot of discussion over the past several months. As Sam Kramer has indicated, we, on behalf of Trans Iowa, Capitol, and Yellow have visited with Sam, and we've come up with what we believe is something that would be acceptable, at least to Trans Iowa, Capitol, and Yellow. So the first item, the, on the application continuation of the hearing, is my understanding, we've talked with city legal department regarding this, and also with Gary Fox, Traffic and Transportation, Kevin Foley at the airport, deals with the concurrence, the concern that we've had from day one, which you've heard us say before, is that if the application for five licenses would be granted by the council for City Cab, that there be counted as to the numbers of cab companies, or excuse me, licenses in this community. Saying all of that, we at Trans Iowa, speaking for them, we would be agreeable, we have 100 licenses that have been issued by the city to, to Trans Iowa, Capitol, Yellow. Our count is that the Freedom has eight existing licenses, and United has five, and with the application of Sam Kramer's client, there would be five more. So a total of 118. This, since this would be an approval of five additional, we wanted some recitation, we've talked with legal department about this, and Traffic and Transportation, the manager's office, that there be something in a resolution that would say that there's 118 as of this date. That this hearing is, in fact, we believe, on the application for the certificates of public convenience and necessity, necessity being a key word in our mind, not being too legalistic, that there be a finding that there's 118 total. There's also another cab company that has no licenses, they're operating without license, Alpha Cab Company, they're the subject of litigation with the city. So in the 118 count, we're not talking about Alpha Cab Company. That's another day, another discussion. I presume Alpha may have some time at the, when they have to come back to ask for the same thing that all of us have to do. So reviewing the proposed resolutions for item number forty-three, Mr. Mayor, we had trouble with the alternate resolutions. So I supplied your legal counsel this afternoon after Mr. Kramer and I reviewed a resolution that would say in part, and speak to the 118 licenses, recognizing that if anyone wants to come back, including ourselves, Trans Iowa, to ask for an additional license, we'd have to come back, and we'd have to prove that there would be a necessity for something over and above the combined 118. So we have some substitute language, like I say, that I've provided Mr. Lester with Mr. Kramer's review with me, and we both concur with that proposed language. Item number forty-three A, first consideration of the ordinance that deals with the $2 per trip where a taxi cab steward is utilized. We reviewed with Gary Fox, or I did, with Gary Fox, and I think Gary's talked with Mr. Kramer and with Mr. Foley at the airport, how we, Trans Iowa, where there's a steward, two places in particular, one at the airport, one on Court Avenue, that steward actually works for Trans Iowa, how we could be reimbursed for some of that cost. Thus, the $2 per trip, in reading the ordinance, I think you'd allow under your ordinance 50 cents, so we're asking if the council would consider under I, A, excuse me, forty-three A, and then B, that the increase to $2 per trip. Now, how that would work is that there is a steward at the, at the airport in particular, and since the steward is at the airport, then if there's some way to identify the cab companies that are licensed in Des Moines to, that use the airport, then that there would be, including our own people, our own cabs, $2 for loading that would be added to the fare to take a person or persons or people per load, $2, and it would be collected. We're willing to take on that responsibility to collect, to bill, to so forth, all of the requirements. And frankly, it's our, it's a service that we would provide. If the other cab companies who may differ with that as to whether they're paying, then it's, we're going to have some authority in some way to be able to have those people leave the queuing up at the airport. In other words, if there's a cab company say, we don't want to pay the $2, then in fact, we don't want to, we want some way to have that party leave the queue. Same thing at Court Avenue. Court Avenue is another place where we have a steward. On occasion, we have a steward at the, at the fairgrounds during fairground time, just because you need a place, and the police have said that they want a place where cabs would congregate and where there are people would be able to get a cab. So I think kind of a simplistic way to say, if you don't pay, you can't play. It's an optional service that the cab companies would have. Candidly, at this point, at the airport in particular, one of the cab companies is receiving that benefit of, frankly, just staying in line, and they pay none of the overhead, which has been the subject of a lot of discussion. So saying that, we wrote a letter to Gary Fox. Gary, I think, has reviewed it. At least, he's told me that it looks fine, and, and sent that to Mr. Fox, also to Mr. Foley. I have copies of that. Mr. Mayor, if I might just send a copy of the letter around, it's, I want to make it part of the record.
Just, just in matter of clarification, had the other cabs, Freedom and Trans Iowa and City and whoever been notified of that $2?
I believe so.
Okay.
City Cab, Trans Iowa, of course, we represent, and City Cab's represented by Mr. Kramer, so we're well aware of that. My understanding is United Cab has been made aware of it, and I don't know about Freedom. But I think Mr. Fox can speak to that as to if they do not want to pay the $2, then in fact, they shouldn't be able to receive the service. So we believe it to be optional. The other item on the ordinance would be, of course, the $2 would have to be, I think I spoke to that, forty-three A and B, would be the, then the ordinance to amend to allow for the $2 charge. Then I think, honestly, Mayor, to answer your question, I think it becomes a matter of enforceability. But because the airport's now in the transition, we thought, and I think the airport director thought that we should have some kind of a letter that would state the procedure, and so this letter does set forth the procedure, how the money would be collected, how it would have some orderly process. I'd welcome questions at the council members.
I don't know how the rest of the council feels, but I think at the end of the day, the council will still decide how we do ordinances and those kind of things. I don't think we're going to let that airport do those.
No, they were, so I'm not unclear, I think the ordinance would trump it, to be very honest with you, and that's the request to have the ordinance changed. But they wanted to have an orderly procedure. What we're really concerned about is that if a company comes there and they want to stay there, and they want to use the service at the airport in particular, and they want to avail themselves of the service, and yet they don't want to pay, that becomes a real problem, because they queue up, and one company in particular has taken about 30% of the trips from the airport, and they're not paying anything for the service. So we want to be sure they all pay.
Mr. Coleman, can you tell us what the average fare is that leaves the airport?
You tell, leave, you'll have to come here. Do you hear the question?
Yeah.
You have to give your name and your address.
Lee Christensen, Trans Iowa, 1550 East Army Post Road. Probably the average fare is somewhere around $13 to $14. Okay. So it's not like we're doubling or tripling the cost. It's a 10 to 15% increase for most people that would be there, if it was passed on.
And I think the other thing, too, is almost all the larger city airports that you exit have that same type of airport fee as you exited.
Yeah, I think it's a good solution. The second question is in relationship to the 118, and I think is, you know, I've tried to at least solve some of the subjectivity about this by saying that today, we have a need for a certain amount. I might agree with 118, mine might be lower. But right now, you count in your numbers the Freedom cab numbers, is that right?
Yes.
And-
But not Alpha.
But not Alpha. That's right. It's Alpha that has the-
Alpha has, we think, maybe two or three, but they're not, they have no licenses, they're a subject of litigation. We have not included them in the 118 number.
Okay, thank you.
And everybody pays, including our client. I want to be sure the council knows that.
And then, I have one other question, Rick, on the $2 fee. If, could, do we have a lot of other fees that are established? Do we have a lot of other fees that are established that a licensee or a resident has to pay that's paid to a third party? I assume that we've run this up to the flagpole of that we could do this? I mean, Jeff, maybe you're better to answer that, too, I'm sorry.
Well, I'll answer part of it. I'm not aware of too many situations like this where we establish a fee that is paid between two private parties. I would say to you in this instance, I hope the fee is not paid to the city. I don't want to have the city, at least my recommendation to you would be not to have the city involved in that exchange of money. I think it's best if it's all private, and I'm not aware of too many other examples with it. Maybe Mr. Lester has additional information on the subject, though.
I think the fee, there's already a fee that's in existence of 50 cents, so that this isn't a new fee, this is a fee that already exists, and the ordinance just permits the companies to charge that fee similar to the rates that are set forth in the ordinance. So it's a permission for them to charge it, it's not a city fee.
Could a company theoretically not contract with your provider and provide their own steward somewhere else along the way?
The city, yes. There could be another cab stand that could be created, that's a nightmare for the airports, what they've told us, and the same thing with, I think, Mr. Fox.
Yeah, I'm just trying to find the right balance in my own mind that, okay, you know, I like the idea of it being organized, I think it's good for the citizens and the people that go there, I just want to make sure that we aren't forcing somebody to do business with somebody they don't want to. But if they want to be at the airport, here's the option, they can use your steward station, which is conveniently located, they can charge a fee that we've approved and do it, or they can not go to the airport, or potentially lease or arrange with the airport to find a different spot.
That's, yes, and I think as the managers indicated, they didn't want, the city doesn't want to be in the process of having that steward be their employee.
Right.
We're perfectly comfortable with, at the airport, and I should say also at Court Avenue, off-duty police people are the, at Court Avenue, but they would be our employees, it's a method of reimbursement for those services provided, and if somebody doesn't want to use it, or they say they don't want to provide service at the airport, and incidentally, a lot of the Trans Iowa, Yellow and Capitol drivers do not go to the airport. So it's not, it's really, hopefully, something where it would be optional for those people who want to provide that service. They're independent contractors, our clients are.
Perfect.
Bill, I've got a suggestion. If this is passed, I would highly recommend signage at the cab stands that say there'll be a $2 fee charged upon loading.
Yes.
Because you get people from out of town, and they're going to think, wow, what's this driver pulling?
Yes. Yeah, they need to know that, I agree, Mr. Moore, before they get into the cab, that there would be $2 extra, and it's $2 extra on top of the fare.
Mr. Mayor, question?
Please.
I'd like to go back and have discussion about the necessity that you're talking about, and I agree with the cap and where it's at, but I guess I'd like to have some discussion and maybe some consensus as to when people come back to the city, because we know it's a matter of time before it will happen again, how are we going to, number one, demonstrate a necessity or a lack of necessity, and who's going to pay for that?
Here.
I think that's one of the biggest issues we've gotten into now, and I'd like to have some agreement that maybe, I know that Trans Iowa incurred a lot of costs to do this the last time, the concern with that is always that it's not an independent third party. So could we have some discussion about that?
I'd like to speak to that if I could. Back last fall, when we were here before, and we had a lot of discussion about that, after that was done, and after the, frankly, I think, United Cab was issued their cab licenses and City was not, we incurred expense with Mr. Rubino in Florida for a report to find out, in fact, if the city, I hate to use the word capped up, but we felt that the number of cabs that were on the street, that there were sufficient cabs in the city. That report came after the fact, it came before the last discussion that you had regarding the probationary period. So we filed that report with the manager's office, with Traffic and Transportation, it's an independent third party, we did pay for it, and so we have, at least in our mind, and we want that to be made a part of the record also, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, that we believe presently that that number was more like in the 80 number, as I recall, wasn't it, 80, 85 cabs, that Mr. Rubino independent thought would be sufficient for the city of our size? Because of the, we have trips, we have fewer trips, and we have more cabs, and so he felt in that report, and that's documented in a written report, our thought, Mrs. Hensley, members of the council, if someone came back to ask, including ourselves, that the 118 number be exceeded by whatever, then that should be their burden. In fact, we think the words "public convenience" and "necessity" to operate a cab, we've always felt that that should be on the burden of the party asking, that's the debate we've had with Mr. Kramer and his client. So what we've suggested in the language in your resolution, if you give the five licenses, that there be some recording of the number 118, so that the next party that comes back could be us, say we need more, we can't just come in and file a application, we need to prove it. And so I guess it's a matter of proof in our mind, under your ordinance.
Yeah, please respond, Mrs. Hensley.
Pardon?
Yeah, please respond also.
Yes, please.
Ms. Hensley, we, too, have given a great deal of thought, because the issue you raise is a very good one. The very simple solution that we would recommend is if you get another applicant or a current licensee who wishes to expand the number of cabs they have, that the city have a study done for the number of cabs and whether there is a need by an independent source, but as a precondition to having a hearing on the license. It would seem to me the applicant ought to, at first, reimburse the city for that cost. And the reason I feel it should be done in that manner is because that causes the study to be independent, it causes the city to get the answers that it's looking for and the questions properly asked, and I think it should be the cost of the applicant who wants more cabs, but I think it really ought to be something controlled by the city, because it's ultimately the city's determination as to who's getting more cabs, rather than one of the individual cab companies.
Just for information purposes, do we have an idea, a range as to what the cost of that would be? I mean, because I don't want it to prohibit somebody coming forward.
We paid Mr. Rubino about $3,000.
Okay, fine. Okay.
Howie?
Bill, I don't have anything specific for you, so when we get to kind of discussion, I can chime in.
Okay.
People are still...
Skipper Bob.
Grilling Bill.
Say it.
Fine.
Okay, thank you.
All right, now, just to clarify for all of us, I think at this time, the item before us for discussion is the application form, City Cab LLC, for a certificate of public convenience and necessity to operate a taxi cab. I'd like to quickly have Gary Fox stand up and tell us the status of that application in terms of the regular review that you go through, if you wouldn't mind, just to bring us up to date.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, Gary Fox, City Traffic Engineer. As you indicated, Mr. Mayor, City Cab did file a complete application back last fall, which was considered and denied at that time. They reapplied this year with the current application. The ordinance establishes a number of factors that must be provided in the application. We've reviewed the application thoroughly, determined that they do meet all the requirements of our ordinance to provide taxi cab service, and then thus have presented the application forward to you for your consideration.
Excuse me, we need to kind of have order in the hall so that we can hear what everybody has to say, and you'll all get your turn to stand up if you so desire, but we'd ask that you show consideration to our speakers and to the people up here that are listening. So when you're talking and carrying on conversations, it kind of, your conversation then comes in with us the same as the testimony that's being given by the people at the podium. So we'd ask you all to please remain quiet if there's conversations need to happen or exchange of information, if you do it out in the hall, and then come in, appreciate that. Show respect to all speakers. Thank you. Gary, sorry.
So as I stated, my staff and myself have reviewed this thoroughly, determined that they do meet the qualifications as established in the ordinance, those minimum qualifications for the number of vehicles, number of drivers, the age of the vehicles, place of business to do operation, all of that, they have complied with those. Further, we have no record of any additional violations or things through the police check of the records of the principal involved in the firm that's making the application. So we have a complete application that we've brought forward to you.
And the license is for five cabs?
Five vehicles. And the ordinance does require in each case that when you approve an application and a certificate is for a specific number of vehicles.
And also with the approval, then after that, they'd have to have drivers that would then also get approved to have a taxi license?
Correct, and they have provided the names and background information of individuals that they propose to be drivers, and we've checked those as well.
Okay, thank you very much. All right. Yes, sir, give us your name and your address.
My name, Abdoulaye Roble.
I'm sorry?
Abdoulaye Roble, my name.
Okay.
And my address, 6121 Southwest Christian Avenue.
Okay.
I want to say something, I know English a little bit, but I wanted to help my friend.
Sure.
My name is Arby, I'm just a translator for my minister, so they just call me for translation.
Okay.
So I'm translating for him, and he's saying, translates your English.
He said everything on these letters, they got some more copies of these letters, everything
in here is approved, all the three people that signed it, all three of them are here. Like he's saying, as he was saying, that they wasn't real, like none of them's signature was, they were fake, he said all three people that signed here, and they're all the City Cab drivers.
Okay. And this letter was made available to whom?
The City Cab.
Okay, and...
I think that, can I see the letter real quick?
Yeah.
It's the one that we got.
He's referring to a letter that's already, I think, in the record.
Right.
And it's the letter that I think we received by email today, that Diane received on her behalf.
So he was just basically standing up, and he was talking, and he's saying all the signatures, the three of them was a City Cab driver, and all three of them that signed it, they're all three of them are here. Basically, he just basically approved his point that they were here, it was real signature.
Mayor, can I ask a question?
Yes, please.
It's my understanding you are an employee or a contractor with City Cab?
He's a driver of City Cab.
Do you have a different job now?
No.
And you signed this letter?
He said him and the two City Cab drivers signed it, they're three total.
And he meant to sign it?
He said the both, the two others was here, two are here.
Could he take it into the microphone?
He's the, he's the second signer on the letter, and he meant to sign it.
And so is this, are you also the individual then that was trying to have an investment in the company?
He was, he was in there for a year, so when they get close to the point where they was getting their license for everything, they was trying to kick him out.
Okay, and again, you still are a driver for City Cab?
Yeah.
Is he licensed to drive in Des Moines?
Licensed to drive in Des Moines, yes.
Okay, so he's, has a license to drive in Des Moines, received it from our, the
city of Des Moines, and to drive a cab, not just drive a car?
Licensed to taxi, yes.
Okay, and he was employed formerly by whom, who employed him to drive a cab in Des Moines?
City Cab.
City Cab was never licensed to drive in the city of Des Moines?
He got a license to drive, but he doesn't drive Des Moines. He's, basically, the whole point was...
Okay, the point here is that you have to have, to drive a cab in the city of Des Moines, I believe, Gary, and you could correct me if I'm wrong, they've got to apply for a cab driver's license through you. Now, the question is, have any of these folks obtained a driver's license or a cab driver's license for the city of Des Moines?
Not in Des Moines district area.
Okay.
Yep.
So he can't drive in the city of Des Moines?
Not in Des Moines district area and airport.
Right, okay, thank you very much.
Yep.
Does he have anything else, what he's saying is whatever it is on this paper, he signed it, and he says it's true, is that right?
Yes.
Okay. We'll let you speak in just a minute. We've got a couple other people that haven't spoken yet, I think.
I'm just doing translation for all this.
Okay.
My name is Awis Habib, I live 210 South Fort Full Street, West Des Moines. So I just write this paper, everything's true, I just sign. So one first time, this address, just pick up like two months, this address. I know I found two couple carry car, I just give this guy owner, so he pick up, carry car, use gas for fuel, I know this guy owner.
He...
Will you speak into the microphone so we can get this on record, please?
He said he picked a customer when he was driving for a City Cab, he picked a customer up, and the customer left his wallet in the car, and then the wallet with the credit card in there, so and then he gave to the owner, which is him, he's supposed to go give him back, he didn't, he went and used the credit card to put some gas in his cab.
Have there been any complaints filed by the people whose credit cards were used or whatever that would be evidence of it, rather than you're just saying that's what he did? I mean, we're not running a court system here, we're trying to decide whether or not we ought to approve a license, and as near as I can tell, based upon the threats in this letter, you're trying to block that. Is that correct?
Still true, no, it's not black. It's not black, just, we ran 14 years in Des Moines, because these people, they come like maybe a couple years here.
He said he's not trying to block it, he just, as his opinion, when he was driving for City Cab, he just telling what happened during the time.
Well, I understand.
And he keeps talking about the past tense, so is he still driving with City Cab?
Okay, he said the City Cab, he owns the name, but the cars, all they're blocked, one of his hands, he's got his own car, and they own car, but they're still driving it for him. They're still driving for City Cab.
Just using the name only.
They're just using the name.
Who owns City Cab? Okay, but you've got City Cab cars and you're still driving, but you really don't have a license to do so, is that correct?
We just using name, cars, my, I got lesson.
He got his license for like, they don't do any more.
He has the license in wherever it is that you folks operate, and so now you're saying that you are driving for yourselves without his permission?
I think other cab companies have independent contractors that own their own car.
Exactly.
So I don't think that they're describing a situation that's any different. So, I don't think that they're describing a situation that's any different.
Well, I'm not sure.
I don't think it makes any difference, really. I mean, what, I mean, that's their own kind of personal dispute, whether they should be using the company name or not. I mean, I don't think that has any bearing. For me, I think what's relevant to me is that at least two of the signers signed this letter, fully knowing what it said. Whether, I mean, we can discuss merit, but I think that's what I'm taking away from...
Yep. I'm with you.
The last two speakers.
Are you interested in hearing from the third one, or are you...
If the third one wants to speak, by all means.
I've got a question of Aweez.
Yeah, go ahead.
You made the statement that you gave the wallet to the other gentleman, and he went and used the credit card to put gasoline in his vehicle.
When he first went to sign up, they say that every time he guys find anything in the car, bring it to me. So, he bring it to the owner.
But he made the statement that the owner took the credit card to put fuel in his vehicle.
Yeah. He was right there. He even told him that you want me to put something, he said he don't want it, he was cool.
You were present when that took place?
He was there.
Thank you.
He was there when he put the fuel in the car, or when he said that that might be what he's going to do?
He was there. He even asked him, he was saying, no, I'm cool. So, he was present, he was there, when he was using the car to put the gas. They both went up there, he put the gas, he had put the gas in it.
It sounds to me like they need to go up to the state and file charges or something.
Does the third signer on the letter want to speak? Aweez Ali Aweez Jordan?
My name is Aweez, Aweez Ali Chama, and I'm live six zero eleven Kristen Avenue, apartment seven. But... And... 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 Anyway.
You know, you need to stand back by the wall, please?
So, what I said, it was, yeah. Okay. He said when he brought, when they brought this letter for him, he signed it.
Okay. So, he supports those claims?
He says he's not supporting the owner, the city driver, he's not supporting them, he's just trying to get a job himself.
Okay.
So, he's not supporting nobody. He just signed the paper.
Is what this letter says, I mean, are these true, what the letter says? Or is he just trying to get a job?
He's a driver too.
I understand. Is he trying to get a job or maintain a job, or is he signing it because he believes all those statements to be true?
So, when they brought it to him, they just translated him, and then he signed it.
So, he believes that? Okay. Wait a minute. Wait, wait, wait. Let's, let's all calm down.
Okay, go ahead.
He didn't say it right.
Tell us who you are. Tell us who you are.
Oh, I'm Abdinasifara. I'm a resident of thirty-five twenty-three University Avenue.
In Des Moines?
In Des Moines. And I'm just translating because he didn't say, because he's signing over here.
Uh huh.
I kind of speak the both language, Somali and English. And my understanding, he's signing with these two gentlemen here. And he just lied about his statements here.
He what?
Honest to God. He just twisted what he said. And...
Accurate translation.
Yeah. It wasn't accurate. What he said and what he just said in English.
Okay. Let me ask you, and we may need to refer this to the courthouse.
Uh huh.
As opposed to being in here with the allegations that are coming forward here?
Mm-hmm.
But what I'm saying is that, does he believe what's in that letter to be true?
He said he can read or write English. And he said, they just brought the letter to him and told him to write his name here and write his name here. And after, what he just translated back to you, I don't know if you guys were recording it, he said, they read and made him and stood with, it's on his paper.
Does...
And he signed it, and he didn't say that.
Okay. That works for me. That's sufficient.
He didn't say that.
Okay. Thank you. I think we're done with this part of the testimony, unless you guys want to hear some more of this.
No. I'm good on this. Sam, can you come back up, Mr. Kramer? I have a question for you.
And then, then we'd like to hear from your client.
Oh, okay.
Thank you very much.
Most of, most of the stuff in this letter is kind of he said, he said, she said, I don't know who said it, or who even agrees with it at this point. But one thing that can be either yes or no, Westland Cabaret, it says that they're no longer allowed to pick up people at that location. Is that true? Are they allowed to pick up people at that location?
No.
First, give your name, give your address, and the exact question was, is City Cab allowed to pick customers up at Westland?
My name Muhammad, East Uklad Street ten. And I pick up in West Galan, I pick up in West Des Moines, I pick up in Johnson, I pick up in everywhere outside of Des Moines. This guy is crazy. Aweez.
Okay. Wait a minute. Just answer the question.
Okay. Okay.
So, the answer to your question, Mr. Greis, is no. Those allegations are not correct, per Mohammed.
If and him last week, he walk.
Okay. Okay. Another question, Hallie?
Yeah, yes. I guess with this, I don't even know where to start. I mean, there's a whole bunch of different issues. I think we have to decide if there's public necessity, which I think is kind of a misnomer for the council to discern, to determine public necessity. I think the private market will establish if there's necessity or not. The fact that incoming applicants and the existing cabs agree that one hundred and eighteen is the right number seems to suffice for me to say that there's a need for one hundred and eighteen if both sides are there. So, I'm okay with the one hundred and eighteen. Going back to, I don't know when this first started, and we approved the cab licenses for United, and the Freedom Cab woman spoke very highly of the ownership, a United cab, against her business interests, and she spoke very poorly of City Cab's management, ownership. And that, that really stood out to me. And those questions have, have continued to linger. And so, I think in part, that's why we passed the probationary period. And so, if, if we're in a position to approve these licenses tonight, and I still don't know where I'm at...
Actually, we rejected the probationary license.
Yeah, we did.
Okay. Okay. I guess I was mistaken on that. But I have very difficult time approving this, even if we had a probationary period, simply for the fact that, I mean, there's allegations like this that, that seem to keep coming up every time we have a hearing, and that's very concerning to me that these, that this company is going to be the face of our city, to people getting picked up from the airport, et cetera. I mean, that's a problem for me. So, I don't, I don't know where I'm at on the issue. But those are my thoughts.
Mr. Mayor?
I understand. Yes. Ms. Hensley?
I came here tonight fully prepared to support this, but I have to tell you, I am really disappointed in all the discussion that's going on. And I agree with Mr. Grease. I think that it causes me great concern about you out there and as a business. I mean, I sat here listening to the arguments and all of the discussion going on, and what was going through my mind, and what I even said to Councilmember Coleman, is why would we want to have them out in the city doing business? I don't know whether or not they're true or not, but it gives me great concern that you would be out representing the city of Des Moines, and that's what you're doing. So, I don't disagree with the one hundred and eighteen, but I'm not sure you're the right company right now. You need to, no, you need to get your act together.
Well, here, Christine, let me, let me offer this up and see, and I think that I agree with Hallie. I don't mind moving on, saying, okay, if everybody agrees it ought to be one hundred and eighteen, let's do one hundred and eighteen. I don't know that I'm ready this evening, unfortunately, to vote to support a license to anybody that's in, in here this evening. Based upon the testimony that's here, I'd almost take the, our recorded history of this and turn it over to Sarcone, the Polk County Attorney's Office, and see if there's any substance to any of this. And if there's not, the people that are, that are bearing false witness, one side or the other, need to testify, and we've got their names on record. This is a public hearing. There have been some serious accusations made, and I think that that would be one course of action. We do our work, that's city work, and turn the rest of it over, because I agree, I'm a little queasy about any of these guys driving, because I don't know who's telling the truth. And we have no evidence here whatsoever, other than is Hallie said, he said, she said, they said, I said, somebody said. And I don't hear any charges being filed against the owner here, because these are, these are accusations. This is criminal activity.
Mayor, one thing that bothers me about this is Aweez Habib admitted he saw a criminal act happening, and he's never said anything to anybody until this gentleman comes in here for a license. He should have, he should have called the police the day he saw it, and I've got a problem with that. That makes me question the validity of that statement.
Can, Skip, can I ask one more question along your lines? And, and I mentioned this earlier. Sam, do you mind if I ask somebody else a question real quick? The two people that acknowledged that they signed and agreed to the contents of that letter, can you come up? And without getting into a long debate, will you listen to?
I'm not speaking down.
When I first read the letter sometime late morning or earlier this afternoon, my, my response was, somebody that continually, I said this to a couple of the lawyers earlier, somebody that continually writes City Cab LLC and uses some technical jargon was probably not a letter written by either of the two of you. And I heard you both say in your testimony, when it was given to me, I signed it. I'd like to know who authored the letter? Who was on the keyboard that put that letter together and brought it to you?
He was sitting down, then he was telling the person, and the person was typing.
So, those are your words that somebody else typed in?
They were, it was telling, and the other person was writing down for them.
Do you know what the legal name of the cab company is?
He don't know.
Okay. Okay. I don't think that's relevant to our action here tonight. I think it's an interesting discussion, and I'd like to listen to it, but I think maybe the courthouse. I'm, I'm not prepared to take testimony on all the accusations that have been here tonight.
Well, if we're going to turn it over to the county attorney, let's get all the evidence here.
Could we, can I make a suggestion for a motion so we can move this on? Would that...
Yeah. Do you want to say something?
I just want to say two things very briefly. Number one, the issues that are being raised here are in fact criminal issues, and to my knowledge, there have been no criminal complaints. I mean, these are arguments that there's been...
Okay. We'd like to have everybody that's not speaking stand against the wall, and we'll call on you guys if you need to say something else. Sam, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. To our, our knowledge, there have been no criminal complaints. Again, we have a contentious issue with some people who lack some matters, some modicum of sophistication, and there's also a language barrier here. I think that you're right, you don't want to be a trial court. I think that what you want to be is a licensing body in this particular matter. And I think that these kinds of things, it's very hard to prove a negative, Mr. Mayor. We're just in a position whereby it's very difficult for us to show that something doesn't exist. Thank you.
No, I understand. I understand. But at the same time, we need to, somebody that hadn't, you have not spoken?
No.
Okay.
My name is David Muhammad. I live nine twenty-six Ockra Drive. I'm the one, what are the name for a City Cab? I'm the owner for, I used to be owner for a City Cab. I only one car. Mr. Roble, he don't have a car. I give him my car. I used to go work. This time, we was trying to get a license. They was trying to put block for us. They say we're going to go over there, if you guys can put a for the owner of the company, we need the owner of the company. I say I'm not the owner no more. Muhammad and Shani the owners. If they need you, they can put you over there. And they say we're going to go over there, and we can lie for a City Cab.
He's a founder, he's saying right now. He quit the job and went somewhere else instead of another work, line of work. Supposedly, he's Roble guy with the hat. He gave him a red car, some kind, what kind? Grand Vic, okay. Shani and the gentleman, and that gentleman right there took over the LLC and...
Okay. Can I ask him a question to get back to the, what we're discussing tonight?
Okay.
What light can he shed upon the, whether or not we should or shouldn't give a license to, of convenience and necessity, to Capital Cab LLC?
City Cab.
Or, or, no, I'm sorry, City Cab LLC to operate in the city of Des Moines?
I have an opinion. Opinion, I can say, no, I was like, my, 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 I was like, yes, yes. He's saying yes. Yeah. That's always the question, right? Either yes or no?
Yeah, yeah. That'll do.
Okay. Yeah. So, I was trying to explain something.
I was, I, I go, both of them talked to each other.
Immediate among them. I was trying to talk to them, bring peace between them. It seems to me like, these gentleman and that gentleman right there, they want to get a, take over the name, apparently somehow.
Okay.
They will come up with the whole, now, yeah, then, tell this guy to step aside. We're bringing the whole five cars in here, so you just kind of like get on our side. So, this whole disruption here is that LLC name between these folks and that, and kick that guy out, and that way they can...
Okay. I think I've got the down and dirty interpretation of what's going on here. Thank you very much.
I have one question. One question.
Do we want to hear another question?
No. I'd like to end the discussion and try to make a motion.
I think we're done. I think we're done. Unless anybody else wants to hear another question?
No.
No more questions?
Who didn't, who can't just speak?
The applicant.
Okay.
Do you want to have the applicant speak? Sam? Okay. The applicant has not spoken. We need to have the applicant.
One question. I have one question. I want to say something.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Yeah. This guy, I have, I have two dollars, but if we, and...
Yeah, this guy, I have, I share, had two dollars, but every, and pennies on. Two dollars for hold on. Okay. They, they negotiated with yellow? Okay, carry on.
Yeah, airport, if you pick up, pay two dollars.
If they pick up in the airport, they pay two bucks.
If you pick up, you pay two dollars.
Okay, so he agrees with the $2 charge?
Yeah, 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 two dollar charge.
Yellow, yeah, I know, lawyer's.
Okay.
Okay, so that he supports the amendment to the ordinance, the municipal code, to allow for the $2 trip fee, correct?
Correct. If they're gonna pay, they say if they're gonna pay the two bucks, and you're gonna get the license, then we must, you must make us partner of your license. Okay, they say if you're not gonna put us as partnership, they're gonna get other companies that will support him against him in this hearing. And he say that all the other companies, they didn't take the $2 fee to the, from, I think you guys, why did you take the $2 fee?
City Cab. May I say, my lawyer and, and that company, you agree each other, I'm certified, you have to do, if you don't want to, it's up to you, you have to pay if you pick up.
Who was, the $2 might be, I'm sorry. Yeah, you did in $2, guys.
I got it, you got it.
All right, I, I, I think we get that part.
Oh, okay. Where, where, where for how many parts?
And then, I need, I'm not responsible, and last two years I'm-
Okay, he's trying to say that he don't want to mess up his name up, so he want to be a straight, so that way, when they audit him, they won't find that he don't pay the $2 fee.
Okay, it's my understanding that at the time of the fare, getting in the cab, he pays the two bucks, do they pay it at that time?
Yes.
Do they pay it at that time? Somebody's gonna pay it immediately, not like later, so whoever's driving the cab is gonna pay. And the answer to that is yes. You're gonna pay if you pick somebody up.
However, it's recoverable back as part of the fare of the passenger.
Right. Absolutely. But it's gotta be paid then.
Paid upfront, but it's recoverable.
I'm trying to ask him, all the stuff that they say about him, is it true? He said put down record, there is a life.
Okay, I understand. Well, and, and we're not gonna determine that part tonight, I don't think. Now, unless we have something else that pertains to either the application or the $2 fee, I think we've heard everything.
Okay.
Do we want to hear one last question?
I would move to end the hearing.
Yeah, I would, I'll second that.
Okay, we, now our, hearing is closed, so we'd ask everybody to take their seats, please.
Can I try?
Absolutely.
I, I guess where I'm at is, I would recommend, or I'll make a motion, that we continue the hearing, that we not take action on the City Cab LLC, based upon the comments you've made, Mayor, and talking with Councilmember Coleman here, that we refer the information to the appropriate, proper authority, the, the tape, the transcription here, and look to see if there's any charges. Also, it's my understanding that we have not done any additional background checks since it probably came in the fall. Is that correct, Gary? Would the original checks have been back in the fall when this all started coming forward?
In fact, the application which we submitted to you has background checks that were updated.
They've been updated?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, okay, so that's not necessary. And that we allow a, a time that would be reasonable, and I'm not sure if that'd be two weeks or 30 days?
I think it sounds like 30 days.
That would kind of be my guess, but-
To come back.
To come back. And when it comes back, all we need to come back with is the information, the new information, so that we don't rehash.
Can, can we maybe tonight approve the 118 number and the $2 per trip, so, so that we kind of take that off the table for the next hearing? Is that something we, you would be okay with, or something that we could do?
I don't have a problem with that.
Let's get certainly the $2 deal done.
Senator, if I could make a couple of comments. The ordinance already provides, in essence, a cap. You, you have with the certificate of public convenience and necessity, there's a cap at, at whatever it is. Whatever additional licenses you approve, that becomes the new cap. So, the, the, the resolution that Mr. Lilis proposed, I reviewed that with Mark, because Mark has obviously been more involved in this than I, but we agreed that in fact, the cap is, is already there. You can't get another license without coming back to the council. And you would have to have an ordinance amendment to actually make a hard cap, if, if that's what council wants to do. And, and then, as the city manager and I were discussing earlier, such a hard cap, there'd be nothing to prevent the council from changing the hard cap number at a future point in time, so I'm, I'm not sure what exactly you're advancing by-
Putting the 118 in there.
By, by putting the 118 in there, because any council could change it, and currently you have a functional cap, even though you don't have a numerical cap specified by ordinance, you do have a functional cap.
Okay.
I think what I would prefer to do is go ahead and file the recommendation of Bill Lilis and Kramer tonight. We haven't seen any evidence other than he said, she said about accusations. Turn over the tapes of this to Sarcone or whoever, and if they come back and say, yes, there was criminal action, then we do a revocation on the license that time. But if he's here in good faith, he hasn't done anything wrong, it's unfair to penalize him tonight without any hard evidence as to what took place.
I believe that we're supposed to, you know, do some due diligence on our part before just issuing a license, and I think that, at least I've heard enough, that there, there's a little bit of question in, in my mind about what's going on here.
And I don't remember, originally when we discussed this, we had, in the blue letter, there was a two-part test. One was public necessity, and the second was moral aptitude, something to that effect. But it was, it didn't directly say there had to be violations of the law. It said our, our perception basically of their moral fitness to do this. And so, for me, I'm, tonight, I don't think I'm in a position to approve the license. And to be honest, I don't know that, in a month from now, that I'll be any closer to approving the license. I guess for me, what, what I've seen, the accusations that have been brought forward from multiple different sources, and just what we observed tonight, I, I have real questions about how they reflect on the city, so I don't think I'm, I'm ever gonna get to a, a yes vote on this one.
Well, the additional issue is, is not only about the cab license itself, but how about the drivers? All these guys, I think, up till tonight, or today, have been driving for City Cab.
I think, I, I think the, the other question is all about ownership. I mean, there's a lot of discussion here, and I'm not really sure-
Who owns it?
Who owns it. So, I, I guess I would just see, like to see us continue the item right now, and get information, get answers to the questions. Doesn't mean that we're turning it down, but it doesn't mean that we've approved it either. And maybe we need to have the police department working, or maybe it would be a, a quicker route to go to the police department, refer it back to the police department, as opposed to the county attorney. I'm completely open on that.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we would agree with a issuance of a license with a revocation in the event criminal activity was found. I just wanted to be sure that I had articulated that we would be willing to go along with that plan.
Thank you.
William Lilis, 317, 67, and Suite 300, again, whatever, obviously, the will of the council would be regarding whether it's a continuance or denial or approval of the application, we'd at least like to have you consider item A and B, so we can start to recoup some of those costs, because that really has been a ongoing expense, so if you can separate the two.
I think, Mr. Lilis, that what's on the table is A and B.
I wasn't, I wasn't quite clear.
For sure, yeah.
Okay, fine.
Okay. What's the motion?
The motion is to continue the hearing, and we'll say for 30 days.
On the application for the convenience and necessity?
Yes, for City Cab LLC, to refer it to Police Department and Sarcone, based upon, and maybe the police department would handle it quicker, but I'll, I'll leave that up to the discretion of the city manager.
And city attorney.
And city attorney, excuse me. And then, move approval of item A and B. And we could take those separately, if people feel strongly about that.
I'd prefer we did separately.
Okay, so my first motion would be to continue the hearing for City Cab LLC for the certificate of public convenience and necessity, for 30 days, which would be the council meeting in the 20, the 9th of May.
Five yes, one no.
Okay, item two?
My second motion would be to move approval of items 43A and B.
C is just a reclamation.
Receive and file that, then, yeah.
So what, what is for final consideration, and we're having continuance of?
The $2.
The $2.
$2 only?
Yeah.
Six yes?
All right. Gentlemen, we were hoping to, to reach a conclusion of this discussion. I apologize to everybody here that we couldn't, but given all the testimony that was given to the council this evening, it sort of puts a cloud on the issue. So, Mr. Kramer, appreciate it, your client, everybody else, thank you. And our new interpreter, thank you.
You're very helpful.
I understand, I understand. On a zoning text amendment to Chapter 134-982(c)(3-a), Central Business District Support Commercial, and Chapter 134, 1017(c)(3), Central Business District, Central Business Regulations to Prohibit Gas Stations and Fuel Retail Sales, and to continue the hearing and to extend the moratorium until July 11, 2011, at 5:00 p.m.
I'll move item 44.
Is there anybody in the audience to speak on that item? Item 45. On items regarding proposed 10th Amendment to the Metro Center Urban Renewal Plan, Council Communication Number 11-205, A is a recommendation from the Plan and Zoning Commission, B is a resolution of necessity, C is a hearing on the 10th Amendment, and D is the first consideration of TIF ordinance to expand the urban renewal district. Anyone in the audience to speak on this item?
I'll move.
Item's been moved. Item 46. On the conveyance of underground electric line easement at Southeast 9th Street and Jackson Avenue to Mid-American Energy Company for the Jackson Avenue Detention Basin Pump Station for $1. Anybody in the audience to speak on this item? Do we have a motion?
Move.
Item's been moved.
Six yes?
On items regarding Baker Creek PUD conceptual plan vicinity of 4500 Hubbell, A is to amend the Des Moines 2020 Community Character Land Use Plan, future land use designation from general industrial to medium density residential. B is on the request of Baker Real Estate LP to amend the PUD to identify the easternmost 23 acres of the development of 180 multifamily and 30 single-family semi-detached residential units. C is the first consideration of the ordinance above, and D is the final consideration of the ordinance above, and the waiver is requested by the applicant and requires six votes. Is there anybody in the audience to speak on this set of items, 47A through D? Seeing none.
Seeing none, I'll move 46A through D. 47, I guess it is, A through D.
Six yes?
Item 48. On the Riverwalk north of East Grand Avenue, the resolution proving the plan specifications, form of contract documents, engineer's estimate, designating the lowest responsible bidder as Jasper Construction Services, Inc., Stephen J. Rhodes, President, $639,470.65. Council Communication Number 11-215, A is approving the contract and the bond and permission to sublet. Anybody in the audience to speak on this? Seeing none?
I'll move it, but I'd have a request that, on the installation of the trees, this is awful expensive cost for installation, and that we have somebody from forestry present during the installation. I'd hate to lose these trees when they're paying that kind of money.
Mr. Moore, we'll try to do that.
Thank you.
That ends the hearings at 6:17. Item 49 is development of a dog park at Ewing Park, Council Communication Number 11-220. We've spoken about this a number of times. Don, unless you have any updates, this is moving forward, and when do we hope to have it open?
Summer.
Summer.
Great.
It is great. I heard a lot of positive comments about having a dog park, so that's great.
And then I think you've got a couple more tentative, that, and where might they be located?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Kevin Moran, park manager. In regards to the dog parks, we're hoping to get the first one up own at Ewing Park early July. We still have, are working through some of the other parts of this, which would be the dog, off-dog leash ordinance, it's gonna come back to you, that needs that approval of the council. We also have a permit fee that we're gonna put in front of you guys to approve, and then accepting some of the bids on some of the construction.
So a permit being if I'm, I own a, I'm a dog owner, so I can use the park?
Exactly.
Okay.
And we also are looking at other locations. The other one would be downtown, along West Riverside Drive, is what we're hoping to open up this fall, late winter, early winter, that sort of thing, depending on how we can get moving on that.
Okay.
Kevin, I was wondering, one of those trailer parks over there could be considered as a dog park.
Along the east side? Sure, Bob, Mr. Mahaffey, that'd be a perfect location on the east side there. We could look into that.
We'd like to have one on the east side, too.
Sure.
I know that Brian has been a big supporter of this, and really moving it, and is abscess, I'd be glad to move this item 49.
You know, can I just give a little amplification to what Mr. Mahaffey said? I think we're buying a couple of those mobile home parks along Four Mile Creek. It's really a great suggestion, I think.
Yeah, one of them, cleaned up pretty good, and they're putting a fence around it to keep from dunkers going in and dumping in the area, so, yeah. And it has to be maintained as a green space, so.
Right. That'd be great.
Coleman?
Sorry.
Six yes?
Item 50 is naming of the Court Avenue Plaza portion of the principal Riverwalk as the Hub Spot, and dedication of Parkland. Anybody to speak on that?
I'll move 50.
All right. Mr. Coleman?
I hit the wrong button in a hurry. Yes vote.
Oh, yes.
Six yes?
Thank you.
All right, we have one additional items request for Councilmember Moore to speak regarding sidewalks in East Sheridan Avenue, East 27th Street, and Boyd Street. Mr. Moore?
I don't know if everybody got a copy of the email I received. There's a lady that lives over there that's blind and wheelchair-bound, and she uses Sheridan and part of Hubble and Boyd and East 27th. I went over there and looked, and it's extremely dangerous for her to get up to Hubble and then go up Hubble and some of these other areas. I'd like to receive and file her request for sidewalks to be put in, refer it to the manager and staff to bring back a recommendation. And her email said she's blind and wheelchair-bound.
All right, if we could, a motion to adjourn and reconvene is Board of Health. Hold on, favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? We now sit as Board of Health. Item two is approving the Legal Department to proceed with court action seeking authority to abate the public nuisance at the following locations. A is 1697 McKinley Avenue, it's a main structure and accessory structure. B is 1255 10th Street, it's a main structure. And C is 1621st Street, again, it's a main structure. Anyone in the audience here to speak on any of these items? Seeing none, could we have a motion to abate the public nuisances?
I'll move to A through C.
Hold on, favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion passes, could we have a motion to adjourn? Hold on, favor say aye?
Aye.
And before we declare adjourned, want to welcome Jeff Lester, first meeting. Really had a good time.
Maybe his last meeting.
Great time. Still making...
All right, welcome.
They're not usually this excited.
All right, we sit adjourned, thank you all.